For prayer, we'll get started. Dear Most Gracious Heavenly Father, we thank you for our many, many blessings this glorious day and the many freedoms that we enjoy in our tremendous country. Please give us your strength, guidance, and wisdom this evening, and in your son's name we pray, amen.
My diligence to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. We have a quorum this evening. Announcements?
I have no announcements this evening.
Perfect. Moving along to the minutes of May 3, 2017. If there are no comments, I'll take a motion on the minutes.
No move.
I'll call the vote. Unanimous, thank you very much. I don't believe there's any unfinished business. We'll move right into the public hearing, rezoning R-16-007. Kim.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee. Floor monitor, please. This is a request to rezone approximately 3.3 acres from residential one to commercial three with proffers to allow for a general commercial building and a commercial off-street parking lot for new car inventory as a special use on 2.8 acres via a concurrent SUP application, Staff is recommending approval with the recommended additional language to the generalized development plan proffer included in the proffered conditions dated May 1, 2017. Here is an aerial image of the properties. There are two applicants involved with this rezoning. The first is the Fields Investments LLC, which owns this property here that lies adjacent to an existing office and the Gulf Station, the Gulf Gas Station located right here. There is an existing house on this property that's currently being rented for residential use. The second applicant is Safford Auto, who owns this group of properties here. These properties are adjacent to an office known as SNK Remodeling currently and SPCA. It's also adjacent to ProBuild Lumber Yard and a 13-acre vacant parcel that has a split zoning between R1 and C3. And this vacant parcel located back here, it actually has frontage on Courthouse Road as well, or on Route 1 as well, excuse me. This is the generalized development plan provided for both the rezoning and the companion special use request. You'll see that there are two proposed points of access, one located here, one here, from Courthouse Road. The first will be, will serve the proposed one-story, 3,540-square-foot office building. On this portion of the development, there will be 23 parking spaces, which will be utilized by this commercial office building, but also the shared, along with the existing office building, which happens to be owned by the same owner, it's Field Investments LLC. You'll see an interparcial connection is provided here to that adjacent existing office site. This is going to be a significant improvement for that office. Currently, their only access is through the Gulf Station site, and it's been pretty problematic from them, for them. It's staff's understanding that oftentimes their, their access is blocked by customers for the Gulf Station and for that taco truck located on that site. There's also a stub shown to the proposed parking lot, right here, for Safford. This is to allow for a future connection should the parking lot ever be redeveloped in the future, but it's not a connection that's going to be made right away. The Safford Auto parking lot is intended to be a completely secured site. The second proposed access point is solely for the use of Safford Auto parking lot. The parking lot is for the storage of new car inventory for Safford's Kia, Chrysler Jeep and Dodge and Fiat dealerships. The parking lot will consist of 346 parking spaces and will be completely fenced and gated with no interparcial connections, as I mentioned. This is to ensure the security of the site for their new inventory. The fencing visible from Courthouse Road will be constructed of decorative aluminum, and the remainder of the fence will be chain link. To limit the visual impact from Courthouse Road as much as possible, the applicant is providing a evergreen planting screening within that aluminum fencing line along the frontage and extending back 50 feet along each property line. So it's going to follow from this point all along the frontage back to this point. And staff feels confident that that's going to, to go a long way in, in limiting that visual impact with the fencing and that evergreen planting. The applicant has provided the required transitional screening along the rear of the property. Transitional screening is based on, is to screen from an intense use to a lesser intense use, and since this property is zoned R1, it's intended use for residential, they've provided that transitional screening, but they have requested a waiver for the transitional screening along this property line, which is adjacent to the SPCA site and then that office building. Staff's received letters from the affected property owners that they're in agreement to waiving that transitional screening, and given that those property owners are in agreement and it is commercial development, staff's identified no concern with, with waiving that They've also requested a waiver to the interior parking lot landscaping, and again, staff's raised, identify no concerns with this. Any interior landscaping would reduce the amount of parking available, and that's the, the purpose of this request. And with the enhanced street buffer or that screening along the frontage that's going to block that, that line of sight from Courthouse Road, we're, we're supportive of that waiver. With respect to the traffic, the office development is expected to generate 68 vehicle trips per day, and the parking lot is expected to generate 35 trips per day. The parking lot will only be accessed by Safford Auto employees. No customers will be coming to the site. The employees will be retrieving cars from the property when necessary. There'll be no delivery trucks, no tractor trailers coming to the site. The new inventory will be delivered to the respective dealership, and then employees will drive the cars, the overflow inventory, one by one, to the site and retrieve them on as-needed basis. Traffic impact analysis was completed for both projects, combined and separately. Both studies indicated that no right turn lanes were required for either entrance. In order to address the specific needs of these two developments and provide the two separate access points for each development, the applicant has proposed to construct a 400-foot turn lane section, which will, right turn lane section, which will connect an intermittent right turn lane that exists on Courthouse Road today. Both the county and VDOT agree that the extension of that right turn lane is a significant public safety benefit that outweighs any concerns with having those two separate access points in such close proximity together. The applicants have provided proffers for your consideration, the first being a proffer to develop the site in conformance with the GDP. Currently, the way the proffer is written, it would, it's, it's a substantial conformance with the GDP, so if and when they ever wanted to redevelop that parking lot to another C3 permitted use, it would require them coming back before the planning commission and the board for an amendment to do so. Staff didn't see any reason to do that. A C3 permitted use would be appropriate in this location, and any site development requirements will have to be met upon that redevelopment, so staff's recommending additional language that would make it clear that any redevelopment of the site would not require that amendment. The applicants have proffered to dedicate 15 feet of right-of-way along the property's frontage on Courthouse Road. This is consistent with the county's thoroughfare plan. The applicants have proffered an interparcial connection that shall be provided to that 13-acre vacant property that I mentioned earlier. As we said, the site, it's not conducive to having these interparcial connections now, given the, the needs of this particular request, which is to have a secure site for their inventory. But upon any redevelopment with this proffer, the county would have the assurance that that interparcial connection could be made, which is consistent with what is done in all commercial development in the county. And as mentioned, the applicants have proffered to construct the 400 feet of a continuous right turn lane along the property's frontage on Courthouse Road. Staff is certainly supportive of this language, as it will connect a currently stop-and-start right turn lane that exists today and be a great public safety benefit to the county. Findings in favor of this request include that the proposal is consistent with the county's land use vision for the area. It's an investment and redevelopment of currently underused site that's targeted for a higher intensity commercial use. The redevelopment will result in an increase in real property tax and an increase in tax revenue from the proposed businesses. The proposal includes the enhanced evergreen buffer along the frontage, which will limit that visual impact on Courthouse Road. The proposal includes the construction of a 400-foot section of the right turn lane, which is a needed improvement. And the proposed, the proposal of the interparcial connection from the proposed office site to the existing office site is going to address a current problematic connection for that office currently. Findings against, a large vehicle storage lot is a bit out of character with the surrounding commercial development, and it is not the highest and best use for a property as it translates to, to tax revenue. A brick-and-mortar commercial development would, would certainly generate more tax revenue than a parking lot. Again, staff's analysis and the key findings in favor that I just presented, relay and we're recommending approval with that tweak to the language for the generalized development plan, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Any questions or comments for Kimberly? I do have one, and I apologize if I missed it. In the GDP, did they address stormwater management?
They have shown, they're proposing to do a geo-grid system on the site, and we don't have all of the engineering at this point with the GDP, but it would be...
That'd be under the parking surface?
It would be the parking surface. It's a honeycomb-type design with gravel in between that would allow for that.
Okay, thank you. Yes, sir.
To follow, follow up on that, I was noticing the pervious asphalt, and I was kind of curious, is, staff may know this, or a developer may know this, do we have any examples of this pervious asphalt in the county? I'm just kind of curious how this works. I've heard of it, but I've not seen it actually functioning.
We do have other examples, but I would like to defer to the applicant's engineer on the technical response to that.
Okay, thank you. And then one other question, on the increased real property tax? If they're moving it from another location inside the county, are they, are they expecting to increase the amount of vehicles that are there? Was that, was that what the basis of increasing the, the real property tax is?
Well, the increase in the real property tax is because it's currently zoned residential and, and it's taxed as residential, and it would, with the rezoning, it will be taxed as commercial.
Okay, on the, on the property itself, okay.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? We'll hear from the applicant if they so wish, or applicants.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I'm David Richardson with Webb &amp; Associates. I'm the engineer for both applicants. I'll answer some of your questions as I go through the slides here. I have just a couple of renderings, just to put it in color to help better understand what's going on there. You know, this is the current zoning map that you have, where the four blue parcels on the south side of Courthouse Road, the only residential left on that side between 95 and US 1. Next slide. The one in green is our original application, and that was with Safford Auto. Kimberly's already gone over all the dealerships that they have. They were renting a spot for their cars, and now that has come to an end, and they're in remote places right now, and unfortunately, each place gets further and further away from the dealerships. It's very important to them to have a central location close to their dealerships, because if you're a customer coming in and need a car, if it's not on the lot, you want a different color or a different style, and they have it on the lot. Patience wears thin if you have to wait for that car to come in. If they can get it there in 10 minutes, that's great, but once you start exceeding 20, 30 minutes, the customer may leave the lot and you may not make the sale. When we brought this in, as you can see, there's just one residential piece left, the chipped tooth there, and it was brought to our attention by planning to maybe contact that person and see if they were interested in rezoning as well, so we wouldn't have one spot zoning left. Next slide. So with Mr. Fields, that closes the gap, and it makes everything commercial, except for just that one off-site there. Next slide. Mr. Fields, just, everybody knows Safford Auto, but Mr. Fields, he owns Commuter Express. He's a retired military attorney from the Marine Corps. He opened up Commuter Express in 2001 with one commuter van. He now has 75, and I believe he brings about 600 people to DC every day in his vans. I think his gross income last year was 1.5 million, so it is a legit, legit business, and he plans to move that to the new office on this generalized development plan. The existing conditions, just wanted to get it out of the black and white for you so you could see actual buildings, trees, and things like that. That's our existing conditions. Next slide. The applicants, now remember, only 300 feet of road frontage is actually being rezoned. The next one, the furthest one to the left, is not in this package, but because the owner of one of them owns that, they agreed to go ahead and dedicate that right-of-way as well with this package, even though it wasn't part of the rezoning. Next slide. Currently, there are five entrances, curb cuts from Courthouse Road. We plan to eliminate all of those. We're going to move the utilities back and put in the turn lane where it starts and ends. Next slide. This is what the expanded turn lane's going to look like with the two entrances going into the parcels. Next slide. And the project build-out, this is what it looks like. I put in the light green, the buffer areas, just so you could see a little bit better than on the black and white. One thing that Kimberly did not mention was the two islands that we're putting in on the backside of the entrance to cut back the site vista as well, so when you're coming through there on an angle, you will not see the cars in the parking lot. Any questions?
Excuse me, on the porous pavement, as far as longevity, maintenance required, do you have any information or how that's maintained to make sure it's functioning properly?
Yeah, as a matter of fact, it will be a BMP, so it'll go on record at the courthouse where they have to, this will be a structured BMP, so it's a once-a-year inspection by a certified engineer, so that will have to be done. On the car dealership, we're looking at a GeoWeb system. We're currently, we have it in two, two locations in the county. One is CMC Rebar. It has worked very well over there. I've actually been pretty impressed with it, because we have the roof water coming off of the existing building there, as well as the surface area, and hardly any water's coming out of there. It just goes into the roadside ditch, and it hasn't flooded once with all the big rains that we've had. The other one is the old senate building. We've put some there, so it is working well. We've had about a year to look at it. It's a 57 washstone, so you don't have any dust in it, so it is, in essence, a dustless surface, as well as your stormwater management. You get that 40% void. To answer your question on the other parking lot, Steak 'n Shake is probably one of the best ones to look at that's been there for at least five years now, and it's working real good, the pervious asphalt.
Any other questions or comments at this point? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
I'll open up the public hearing to anybody in the audience that wishes to speak to this application. Seeing none, I will close that part of it, and if there are any other questions or comments...
Now, I just, I want to thank you, Kim, and Mr. Richardson, for the explanation. I'd like, can I make a motion?
Go ahead, make your motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve, first one is R-16-007, Graham &amp; Bethard LLC and Fields Investment LLC, Safford Auto.
Second.
Mr. Bullock, did you want to include staff's recommendation about the additional language on the GDP proff?
I do.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
So are we clear on the motion?
I second it.
Very well, I'll call the vote, please. Unanimous, thank you very much.
Okay, I guess the second one would be SUP 16-0010, Graham &amp; Bethard LLC, Safford Auto.
Mr. Bullock, I actually have a presentation.
Oh, I'm sorry.
For that, it'll be quick.
We can move this right along.
I thought, I thought it was both.
I'm all in favor of that.
It seemed to be both together, okay.
We do have to have a public hearing for it.
Okay.
Go, Kim.
We're on the roll. Let's go.
This is the companion SUP application for the off-street parking lot. Staff is recommending approval with the recommended conditions that were included in your staff report. Those include development of the parking lot in compliance with the GDP, that all transportation improvements shall be included on the site plan for the parking lot and constructed within 12 months, unless they are constructed before that, and the off-street parking for the new vehicle storage shall not be used as a sales lot. This is the affected properties outlined in yellow. This is the same GDP that we just reviewed, and these are essentially the same findings in favor and against, that it'll be a tax boost, it's a redevelopment, they're providing the enhanced visual buffer. The findings against just relate to, is this the highest and best use for the property, and that the vehicle storage lot may not be completely in character with the surrounding development. But given that, staff's recommending approval with those conditions just presented.
Thank you, Kimberly. With the applicant, I'd just speak to this. Very well, anybody in the public that wishes to speak to this application? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing, and I will take a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve SUP 16-0010, Graham &amp; Bethard LLC, Safford Auto.
Second.
May I have a second? I'll call the vote, please.
That's okay. You did it.
Unanimous, thank you very much. I guess we move on to SUP 17-002.
The applicant for this special use permit request is Anderson Propane. They are requesting a special use to approve and allow either four 30,000-gallon or two 60,000-gallon above-ground propane storage tanks on 1.2 acres of commercial two property. Staff is recommending approval with the recommended conditions. Those include the property shall be developed in conformance with the GDP. The applicant shall complete an emergency plan to be approved by the Spotsylvania Fire Rescue and Emergency Management Department prior to site plan approval, and the second point of access shown on the GDP, which is located on the west side of the site that connects to the Deep Run Office Park, shall be utilized for only emergency services Here is an aerial image of the site outlined in yellow on the south side of Beulah-Salsbury Drive. Beulah-Salsbury serves as a portion of the county city line, so the development on the north side of Beulah-Salsbury is within the city of Fredericksburg limits. The applicant, Anderson Propane, current, their current operation is located on the north side of Beulah-Salsbury, across from the subject property. This area has a history of propane and oil storage, and today, the neighboring sites include Lincoln Terminal, which is located in the city, and Quarles Petroleum, which is located in the county. Here is the generalized development plan, which demonstrates the applicant's wish to expand your business's storage capacity by installing the above-ground storage tanks. The purpose of the additional storage is to purchase the propane in bulk at a lower cost during the off-peak season and have the capacity to actually store that on-site. There are no plans to resell or operate a distribution terminal facility at this location. Therefore, there's no additional traffic to be generated by this proposal. It's solely for storage. The GDP shows a completely fenced area with four 30,000-gallon above-ground tanks centrally located on the site. As previously noted, the applicant may opt to do the two 60,000-gallon tanks instead. The access from Beulah-Sals, the factors, the defining factors, and we may ask the applicant when he presents tonight, but it's my understanding that there is costs involved that could sway that decision, as well as the availability of the tanks. The access from Beulah-Salsbury Drive will be gated and accessed electronically by Anderson Distribution trucks. The secondary access is located here, and it is provided to the adjacent Deep Run Office Park. However, this secondary access will only be used for emergency access only. There are, of course, safety concerns related to a pressurized gas operation. Anderson Propane Services has a safety plan in place, which was included in the planning commission's packet. The safety plan is in compliance with all federal and state standards. The storage tanks will be constructed, operated, and maintained in accordance to the requirements of the National Fire Protection Association. The site will be remotely monitored 24/7, including a closed-circuit surveillance system, and have limited automated gate access. Fire Rescue has reviewed this application, and they made the recommendation for a condition as part of the special use permit to require an emergency plan, and this would be a coordinated plan that would ensure the safety of the proposed facility and the surrounding area in the event of an incident. Given the proximity of the subject parcel to the city, we did ask the city's input on this request. Their singular concern had to do with the existing conditions of the intersection at Tidewater Trail in Beulah-Salsbury. They indicated the, the primary problem is there's not enough turning radar, radi for the large trucks to exit off of Beulah-Salsbury onto Tidewater Trail without crossing over into that opposing traffic, and the same coming into, off of Tidewater Trail onto Beulah-Salsbury. I mentioned in, or we included in the staff report that, you know, while staff, or while the county acknowledged that there were some issues with this intersection, this wasn't an improvement that, that the county had on their radar, it wasn't a planned project. We have since the staff report confirmed with VDOT that they have safety funds available that this intersection improvement would qualify for. So this isn't coming out of the county's pocket, this is safety funds that VDOT has that would increase the turning radi and really address, VDOT believes will address the, the big issues here.
And we have that in writing?
This was a phone conversation that, that we had, and they asked for the county's go-ahead. They did ask for, there'll be a certain amount of right-of-way needed from Quarles, and they have had discussions with Quarles, and they are willing to dedicate the right-of-way, so VDOT did say the county will help facilitate that process, but this seems to be something that's a very doable project, that would improve this intersection. But I, I will just restate that the proposal before us tonight is not making this intersection worse. It is what it is now. There's not new trips being generated here. This is, this is solely for the storage of their current operation. Findings in favor include the proposal results in a business investment... Findings in favor include the proposal results in a business investment in the county and complements the county's industrial and commercial growth goals and tax-based goals. The applicant will be working with Fram to create an emergency plan to ensure the safety of the facility and the surrounding area, and the proposal is not expected to adversely impact the nearby road networks. Findings against, there are safety concerns related to bulk storage tanks located in two-tenths of a mile of residences and businesses, even closer to businesses. But again, they're meeting their state and federal requirements. They have a plan to coordinate and cooperate with Fram to come up with an emergency plan, and with that, and the findings in favor, staff is recommending approval with the recommended conditions presented previously.
Thank you, Kim, any questions for Kim? The applicant like to speak?
I apologize in advance, I think some of my comments are going to be a little bit redundant. Well, my name is Mark Anderson, I'm the president of Anderson Propane Service located here in Spotsylvania County. I am here to present and to discuss our proposal to build and operate two sixty thousand gallon propane tanks located at thirty-two hundred Beulah Salisbury Drive. With me tonight are Nicole Camilli, our senior vice president, and Dave Richardson, who's the engineer on the project. To start, I'd like to talk about the history of the area. Kimberly did touch on that. This area has long been and continues to be basically the energy storage hub of the greater Fredericksburg area. In addition to my operation, I am accompanied by Quarles Petroleum, a former Exxon Terminal Facility, and Lincoln Pipeline Operations. We are located on Beulah Salisbury Drive, which is the dividing line between the city and the county. While my corporate office is located in Spotsylvania County, my storage facility is located in the city directly across the street. I would like to relocate and expand the two thirty thousand gallon storage tanks I currently operate in the city into Spotsylvania with two sixty thousand gallon storage tanks. The purpose for this relocation is very simple. We are a small, locally family-owned company competing against mostly national and larger regional companies. We compete against national companies like AmeriGas, Farrell Gas, regional companies like Blossman Gas, many others. We can hold our own with customer service. My door is always open if a customer has a concern or complaint, certainly not something they can get with some of the national guys. We're committed to customer service, but we do not have the buying power to be able to protect our customers and hedge our buying of propane against larger price increases as the national companies do. The additional storage we are requesting certainly doesn't put us into their category, but it helps us take advantage of seasonal pricing so that we can just simply continue to compete. Our ability to compete not only protects our customers against higher prices, but also helps to ensure our long-term survival and the jobs that we provide. We employ approximately forty-five people, and we take that very seriously, we're very proud of that. As fuel and propane plant operators, the first, second, and last question that we always ask ourselves is, what about safety? Is this a safe thing to do? As a company, we maintain a very proactive safety attitude to both our employees and the public so that we can ensure safe and consistent energy supply to them. As plant operators, we are accustomed, we're accustomed to large storage tanks and large trucks that hold propane and oil, those types of things. We're also accustomed to rigorous inspections, and we don't take any of this for granted. It is our job to educate people and officials about how seriously we do take this responsibility. The first and foremost thing to understand in the type of operation that we do is we build, operate, and maintain our plan according to NFPA fifty-eight standards, National Fire Protection Act, it's the Bible, if you will, of safety as regards to pressurized gas storage. As Phil Sullivan can tell you, this is the most recent and safest standard that operators like us adhere to. I would refer you to your packet to review the included safety plan, but I would like to highlight a few of these safety measures, and I'm going to promise I try not to bore you, but it's important. Probably the single biggest change in propane storage over the last so many years is safety relief valves. We use internal safety valves and inline safety valves with, all with remote shutdown capabilities. They are remotely operated, and they're held open through nitrogen pressure. When a safety shut-off button is hit, the nitrogen dumps and all valves close. With all the valves closed, in the event of a fire, there's no more fuel to feed the fire. So the whole point is, you know, sure, accidents could happen, but we certainly want to, if, God forbid, there were an accident, we're going to minimize that through quite a bit of recent technology. One of the interesting things we use, we use what we call fuse links, heat links. In the event of a fire, the tubing is melted and the nitrogen there again is released. So there are safeguards in place whether we're there or not, whether there's even a person there. If there were a fire, these things are going to kick in, these valves are going to close, and we're going to eliminate the magnitude of the issue. There are multiple electronic stops located on the property, so if somebody were to visualize a problem, they could be at one corner of the property, push a button, shuts the whole thing down from, you know, a hundred feet away. And that's a plant standard that NFPA requires. The number-one cause of accidents is a truck pull-off. It's not smoking, it's not terrorism, it's a driver making a mistake and pulling off with the hose attached. We use, this is a fairly new thing, we use smart hose technology, and it circumvents this by the fact that the hose is designed and constructed with pulley protection. There's a built-in cable and release assembly, so if a hose is stretched and/or ruptured, the cable snaps and the hose slams shut, so no product is released from the plant piping and trucking, thus eliminating any future fire. Today's plants are built with three, maybe even four, levels of safety that they didn't have even fifteen, twenty short years ago. Technology has greatly helped this industry. I certainly don't mean to bore you with too many details, but it's a serious business, and we take it very seriously. Our plant, as Kimberly said, will be remotely monitored twenty-four seven with both controlled gate access as well as remote monitoring of inventory changes due to added delivery or loss of pressure. These changes are redundantly sent to multiple employees. What I mean by that is if we have product added to a tank, or maybe even more importantly, you had product escaping a tank, we have monitors in place that literally text and/or email multiple people in my company so somebody can take a look at that and see if this is an anomaly that we should be concerned about. It doesn't happen very often. In closing, I just want to say I'm happy, proud to be a part of this community. Our company's always been a part of this community. You know, we live here, and we give back to the community and fundraising and those types of things, and I appreciate the opportunity to be in front of you tonight, and I'm certainly happy to answer any questions, or I'm sure Ms. Camilli or David would as well. So I would encourage any discussion you might have.
Thank you very much, any questions for the applicant?
Yes.
Go ahead, Ms. Carter.
This, you said, storage tanks, okay? Will your truck traffic increase by any number or not?
All we are doing is increasing our storage.
Your storage.
My trucks will go to these tanks just like they have been, we're just going to have more of it. We do not intend to operate a terminal facility. I think a lot of what has changed down in that area is Lincoln, the Lincoln Terminal operations. Lincoln Terminal is in the business of reselling product from the plantation pipe. That has increased traffic on that little tiny Beulah Salisbury Road an awful lot.
Yes.
They are a wonderful neighbor, wonderful operators, they do a great job. And I've even been in discussions with the city about can I contribute to, you know, it's definitely an issue. My, this plant will not contribute to that, but I've been in discussions with the city, with Lincoln, about what can we do to help with this project. We certainly can't afford to do the whole thing like V. Dot, but we're happy to help.
How long have you been located on Beulah Salisbury Road, back in that area?
Our company?
Yes.
Or, we've been there, the oil, well, I'm in the oil business as well, but since the late seventies.
Never been in an accident? Didn't think so, okay. And you say someone's there around the clock, twenty-four seven?
No, no, no.
No?
No, no, no.
Okay.
We're monitored twenty-four seven.
Okay.
We are there generally from seven AM till probably six PM, a little longer in the winter time. But no, we're remotely monitored when, you know, in the middle of the night type of situation.
Okay, okay. And you said you wanted these storage tanks, it was, at off-season, that you could purchase the propane cheaper by having storage tanks, and I believe I heard you say that this would also help the customers that probably they would receive a cheaper rate. Am I putting words in your mouth, or did you just say this?
Well, what it certainly helps us to do, I mean, I can't guarantee a cheaper rate, but what I can, what I think I can do is it helps us be competitive with the larger companies, both price-wise, supply-wise, you know. The propane business or industry is, as a general rule, is, has some weak infrastructure, quite honestly. We have to, we have to truck everything we do. You know, so when you take a major ice storm, for example, and they can't get propane on a railcar to get it to a terminal, we can't get our trucks out to go get it, it certainly helps to have storage, you know, when we see an event like that coming, we're going to go get propane, put it in those tanks so we can serve our customers. You know, so it certainly helps us from that standpoint. Did I answer your question?
Kind of. Kim, also while you're here, the safety funds from V. Dot, is that, does the county have to request that, what, could you give me information about V. Dot again?
Well, this was a conversation we had with Sean Nelson at V. Dot. He said they had the safety funds available, and they were ready to proceed, they just needed the okay from the county.
So therefore, it's our step first that it's okay to receive the safety funds, is that correct?
To give them the go-ahead.
Okay, okay. And that is decided by the board of supervisors, am I correct?
No, ma'am, it was not any type of resolution or anything needed. He just wanted the go-ahead from the county. And I know Leon Hughes has been in discussions with Sean and had also been in discussions with county admin about that, and gave V. Dot the green light.
Okay, okay, that's fine, I just wanted to make sure, when you say county, that covers a whole
I understand.
large area there, so I just wanted to make sure who had the hands on this and where it would go at that time. That's all I have with questions at this time.
Any other questions? Yes, yes.
This could be either for the applicant or Kimberly. So I've seen in the presentation about having a plan in place for, you know, on record with Spotsylvania, which is great, however, judging by the fact that this is right next to other combustible facilities, has there been any talks about having that plan vetted with both and have a plan of action with both the city and the county in case something were to happen at any of those facilities out there? Has that, has that come up in discussions?
About a, I don't know, Kimberly, you want, you want me to take this? No, it didn't come up in the TRC meeting, it, I don't think it came up with Phil Sullivan. It did?
It did, yeah.
About having a coordinated plan? Well, I know we're, like I said, we're offered and are going to do a fire safety plan. One of the things that we definitely took a look at was myself and Quarles Petroleum split the cost a few years ago of running, I don't remember the size of the line, but bringing additional water capacity back to that area if it was ever needed. I think I speak correctly when I say we exceed what we need in the event of a Okay.
I didn't understand what you were saying, I'm sorry. And David said something awesome.
I think what I said is, is we exceed the amount of water capacity we would need in the event of a fire.
That was one subject that did not come up in the discussion here. I met with Brennealum on-site with utilities, we did a hydrostatic pressure test. We went to the furthest fire hydrant which would have the least. We did the pressure test there, opened up the valve, the residual gauge did not go down much at all. We did our own computations in our office, it's not part of the package, but we came up with seventeen hundred GPM, and the needed for that type of propane tank fire is only twelve hundred GPM. We were a little bit worried because of the location being at the end of the line, but that's why we did the test, just to see, and it far exceeded what utilities actually thought it was going to be out there. And of course, we have two fire hydrants in the Office Park coming from two different directions to the entrance that we're modifying for the fire truck to get in there, and we also have one in front of Quarles on Beulah Salisbury Drive that will reach to the tanks as well, so it can be approached by three different directions and hit a fire hydrant each way.
Yes.
Sheriff, Kim, was, I was just curious of, was there other businesses there located, like, you know, Greenlaw, they've got a building there, remember, it used to be where San Vincent's was, that's right now, where they, they knew about the special use permit? Did they weigh in on it?
We did not receive any feedback, the applicant, as part of our community meeting policy, they sent a letter to the business owners.
What about the city too, because you know, they've got soccer fields right there and stuff? I just wanted to
All those property owners within
No feedback?
Yes, sir, no feedback.
Thank you.
And how far did you go to the Mayfield subdivision? That didn't have to be, they didn't have to be notified? Because that's across the street.
I believe the radius was a five-hundred-foot radius, and that's part of our, that was in accordance with our notification policy.
Any other comments?
Yes, one more. Now, then, I believe this is inspected by the state and federal, am I correct it? Your operation or not?
We are inspected by the local locality, we build it to a federal standard, and then we're inspected by the locality, basically. For example, the city of Fredericksburg comes to our location now, and they, you know, they inspect us on an annual basis. But we do not have, not like we do in the oil business with underground storage tanks, we do not have, you know, inspections every three years, for example.
Kimberly, who would be inspecting from the county?
Well, I mean, the construction would be the, well, that would be the building department.
See, he stated, the gentleman stated that the city inspects every year, year later.
I don't mean to interrupt you, but the person, you know, obviously during the construction, the building department would inspect, but the annual inspection is done by the fire department in the city of Fredericksburg.
Yes.
That's how it would work here too.
All right, have they been contacted?
Fire department?
Our fire department about this?
Well, we were in the TRC Technical Review Committee with Mr. Sullivan, and I have met with him individually to make sure his, you know, his concerns were addressed.
And they were addressed
I hope so.
to his satisfaction?
I certainly think so.
Okay, you agree with that, Kimberly?
Yes, ma'am, they were part of the technical review, and they reviewed the safety plan that the applicant submitted, and then they are who recommended the condition that a plan be coordinated with them and finalized and approved prior to site plan approval, and the chief was part of that recommendation as well as their emergency planning contact, Matt Embry.
That's all I have at this point.
Also at this time?
Also at this time, any other questions?
I just have one, what's your present storage capacity?
60,000 gallons.
You'd just be doubling your capacity?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. I will take any comments from the public if there are any for this application.
Put on another hat, David Richardson, 10-100 Hackberry Court. I live at Hackberry Court, but I also work in the office development by the storage tanks. Just want to let you know that I'm okay with it, the landlord's okay with it, and actually talked to all the other businesses and landowners in that office park, and there, there is no issue with them. They understand what's around them, what's been around them, and what's gonna be there.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other comments? For or against? CA 9, I'll just assume the applicant doesn't, was to readdress the commission. Very well, any other questions or comments? If not, I will close the public hearing and I'll take a motion on this.
I make a motion to approve, my glasses I don't have, SUP 170002. With conditions, I guess, it's all right to say conditions, that we are satisfying utilities. And we have the water capacity that is needed in case of emergency. And also that we have our emergency services from the fire emergencies, that they are, have a written statement, that they are satisfied with what we need in that area. And also that we have something in writing from VDOT on what we need and what we would receive as safety issues in that area.
I want to be specific that we include the recommendation on the safety plan.
Staff's recommended conditions as a whole?
Yes.
Yes.
I'll second.
Call the vote, please. Unanimous, thank you very much. We will move on to the next application. Jacob is coming up, which is an amendment to the zoning ordinance, CA 17-0004.
Good evening, tonight's first public hearing regarding zoning ordinance amendments has to do with changes to the enforcement section of the code. Just want to start off kind of with some background for this and why we're coming forward. As you know, the county's been engaged in an update to the county zoning ordinance for some time now. We're getting to the point, fortunately, we're about to wrap it up, there's only a few more sections left to go at this point. The ultimate impetus for this ongoing review and update is consistent with the Spotsylvania County Comprehensive Plan, specifically Vision Strategy A5. This is a comprehensive plan implementation item to review and update the zoning ordinance. So the proposed amendments in this one, this one's fairly basic, the one that we had discussed on April 5th, that was a little bit more complicated. Had to do with the off-street parking, loading, and stacking, and we'll be getting to that in the next public hearing. The proposed amendments here are in relation specifically to Article 9 enforcement, it's a fairly short section of the zoning ordinance. Substantively, we have no deviations from the current zoning enforcement practices proposed. The amendments proposed include legal clarifications to add accurately portray enforcement functions and added capitalization for consistency with zoning ordinance update. Specifically, in terms of zoning enforcement functions and application, in Section 23911, enforcement responsibilities. We've made sure that the zoning administration enforcement functions have been clarified to include designees of the zoning administrator. Currently, the language is specific to the zoning administrator only, by adding designees allows zoning staff and those assignees who also work under the zoning administrator to also have interpretation enforcement responsibilities in that. Secondly, enforcement responsibilities, there was a reference to a prohibition of building permit issuance. That's incorrect, in speaking with the building office, they said, "We don't want any part of the zoning office, that's the zoning ordinance, we're not actually interpreting the zoning ordinance." Our book is the unified, the statewide unified building code. So the correct reference is actually to zoning permit issuance as zoning administrative responsibility. In the injunctive relief and other civil remedies section, we've struck reference to attempted violation, this was a legal suggestion. As an actual violation will need to occur for zoning ordinance enforcement to incur to warrant that enforcement action. And with that being said, staff does recommend that the planning commission approve CA 170004 pertaining to enforcement, ordinance number 23170. Thank you.
Any questions?
Yes, I have some, one. Since this is being turned over to zoning, does Mr. Robertson have anything that he would like to add to this?
Absolutely.
Mr. Chairman, if it would be-
Very well, yes, absolutely.
We can, we can have him, I would say that I don't think it's gonna change anything, they have been enforcing it, it's not really transferring any responsibility, it's just clarifying it that this is the way it should be. But certainly zoning does have representative here this evening, and he can address that, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I'm here, Rick Robertson with the zoning office. With respect to Jacob's comment about building and zoning on parking, yeah, they, they, we're getting along pretty good with them right now, they agreed that they wouldn't make any parking interpretations, and we won't make any building interpretations. So we get along with them pretty good. With respect to the, as Jacob said, it's just a cleanup of the ordinance, taking some ambiguity out of it. It, it gives me as his deputy the ability to make the interpretation on this ordinance. Currently, right now, as far as off-street parking is concerned, there is not a whole lot of problem with our off-street parking, other than parking in the public right-of-way. That's where we have the most of our complaints, parking in the public right-of-way, which is enforced by the sheriff's department. So I don't know if I've answered your question.
No tractors, trailers, or whatever, do we have any off-street parking?
Off-street parking with respect to tractor-
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Yes.
We may want to hold those questions for the second public hearing?
Oh, okay.
I was just gonna go there, yes.
Okay, okay.
Thank you, Wanda.
Okay, that's fine.
All right, so if you, if you'd be kind enough to readdress the question, so I can get refocused on this?
That's all right, go ahead.
What is the, I mean, what, can you-
It goes to the next one.
Okay, all right, thank you. And I don't know if there's anything else I can add to this, I'm not sure I addressed your question.
No, you did address my question, I just know that when you have a changeover, sometimes we hear from planning and we don't hear from zoning. And I was inquiring to see if you had anything that you would like to add to this.
No.
Very well, I'm assuming there's no public comment on this, so I will close the public hearing part of it. If there are any other questions or comments, I'll take a motion on it. Call the vote. That again is unanimous, thank you very much, we'll move on to CA 17-005.
Okay, so bear with me, this one's a little bit longer presentation, trying to get through some of the questions that were raised back on April 5th when we initially sought authorization for public hearing on this. The second public hearing with the zoning ordinance update has to do with off-street parking, loading, and stacking update. Again, the impetus is from the comprehensive plan, it is a vision strategy to update the zoning ordinance, review and update it, and we're moving forward with that. The specific sections, divisions that we're looking to update this evening have to do with Chapter 23, Article 5, Division 9, 10, and 11, off-street parking, loading, and stacking respectively. Common throughout the amendments is just to clarify vague references such as the board or the design standards. There are unclear abbreviations throughout this, this section that we also saw. There are general references to standards without specific direct location, so we've tried to address that and really get you exactly to what, what is being referenced. If it's the board, we're referencing the Board of Supervisors, the design standards is the county's Design Standards Manual, for instance. We've also sought to correct planning director references to apply to the zoning administrator. Again, this has to do with a zoning administrator function and zoning administrator interpretation. This is something that is already really being addressed by the zoning office, we're just correcting that reference to make sure that it is a zoning administrative function, enforcement function. So there's really not a transfer of responsibilities going on as part of this, it's simply a correction. We've added capitalization referencing county permits, forms, position titles for consistency with ongoing cleanup efforts. This is a standard formatting effort that we've been doing throughout the update process. We've updated codes to reflect related amendments approved elsewhere. There have been recently added uses, for instance, there have been amendments elsewhere in the code where, with overlap, considering some of the sections within the parking, loading, and stacking were last updated in 1995. There have been a lot of things that have happened since that time that we're trying to catch up with. We've also renumbered and alphabetized for formatting, this tends to be within the tables where you have listed uses. Specific to off-street parking and implicability, we've clarified, and this is getting back again to clarification, there are references to P districts. Actually, what that's really referring to is planned development, commercial and planning development, housing, PDC, PDH districts. So we're trying to make sure that we're properly referencing, instead of stopping short, it's only two more letters. We've also referenced acknowledgement to the mixed-use modifications that have occurred since 1995. The mixed-use modifications allowance in off-street parking were added in 2012, so obviously, they haven't caught up with the off-street parking and we're trying to address that here. In general provisions, we've removed stacking space dimension and parking lot lighting requirements as misplaced. They are addressed elsewhere in the code. Lighting, for instance, falls underneath the outdoor lighting ordinance, which we recently had updated a couple months back. And stacking is addressed actually in Division 11, and that's a little bit further on in the presentation. So what we've done is we try to take those kind of duplicate or wrongly placed items and put them where they're, they're meant to be. We've expanded parking lot lighting hours by an hour prior to business open and after close. This proposal is meant to basically consider staff arrivals and departures, as well as deliveries that may become prior to business operations, as well as after close. And we've removed complicated parking requirements for residential subdivisions in Section 23592R. And this is one of the reasons that we actually brought zoning office here this evening. At the last meeting on April 5th, there were concerns about interpretation of this language. It, it really relates to front yard parking in residential subdivisions for lots under 20,000 square feet. The code basically limits your parking area on your front lot to a certain percentage of the lot area. The zoning office has been supportive and staff sought greater input based on planning commission questions regarding your, your questions. We've invited the zoning office to assist if need be to reference this issue, and I've tried to explain it in the staff report, some of the concerns that we've had. I've really tried to break this down for you in the presentation this evening, so I'll, I'll try to give you an explanation. After a view of this subsection with the zoning office, this, again, we do reinforce that we are proposing to remove this from the ordinance. Parking subsection R was added to the zoning ordinance in 2007 to address overcrowding. Overcrowding complaints received by the zoning enforcement staff have declined since the real estate crash of 2007 and 2008. What staff found, though, is that the ordinance addresses a possible symptom of overcrowding and not necessarily overcrowding itself. It may be a sign that there's overcrowding. Subsection R is very restrictive, as viewed by the zoning office, it limits the usable area of an owner's property, especially in the front yard for parking. And the zoning office does not believe subsection R has been cited in cases of overcrowding since its adoption in 2007 either, anyway. It hasn't been used. As a result, the subsection has not had value as initially intended. Subsection R could have, have used as an enforcement tool if the county were to receive a complaint about a lot filled with vehicles in the front yard of a home. Subsection R, I would also address, just follow up to the conversations that we had on the 5th. Subsection R could also result in unintended consequence of driving excess parked vehicles into the cul-de-sac or street side parking, which would generate other travelway complaints, which actually, from what I've learned from the zoning office, that tends to be where the majority of the complaints come from for parking, it's parking in the streets or on the cul-de-sac. Unfortunately, the county is without the authority to pass an ordinance regulating parking on secondary roads unless further authority is granted by, by Virginia. The county does not have the authority to enforce either parking or inoperable vehicles on the public roads. Subsection R for onsite parking would require specific complaints in order to investigate and generate enforcement actions.
One question, back up. Doesn't the county have the authority to adopt those roads and then put them under the county? And then, and then enforce those county ordinances?
I think I have an answer.
Well, I, I know the answer.
Yeah, go ahead, yeah.
We do. We've done it before in the past. So, so we can adopt those, those private roads and then do, do certain enforcement on them. Am I correct, Doug?
I, I think, you know, there's two issues, what we've done is, I think what it requires is the people on that private road, they all have to agree, or a majority, or some portion of them have to agree. They petition the board or something, I think, Wanda, and then we allow, then what we do is we take them in to allow enforcement.
I'm not, I'm not certain of the steps, I, I just know that we've done it in the past.
The, the road would need to meet all of VDOT standards in order to be accepted by VDOT, so that's usually the biggest hurdle.
I'm not talking about-
It's a different issue.
I'm talking about, about the county taking the roads. We, we've done that, we've done that in the past with some subdivisions.
I'm not familiar with-
I think what, what, how we're talking about, if I might, and we can maybe look into it, you're right, we, but we're not talking about taking it into the state system. We're talking to be able to do enforcement activities, and, and I think Ms. Smith's right, because I do recall there were some roads in the past, I'm talking about where there were speeding, there were some issues going on, where enforcement activities. And the sheriff couldn't really do the enforcement activities until the county had some action. So I kind of recall, it's two separate issues, we probably need to look at it.
So it, this probably isn't a land use chapter of the ordinance, it might be under-
Yeah.
-law enforcement or something like that.
I think it's under, it's more of that, it's really not, it's taken into VDOT standards.
No, it's not, it's not taking, I'm not talking about taking it into VDOT standards, I'm, I'm just talking about the county adopting the roads so law enforcement and zoning can do certain enforcement on those roads.
What do you mean by adopting?
I think, I think adopt is the wrong word, I think what it is, it facilitates, it's action taken on behalf of the board, so the sheriff's department can do enforcement activities.
That, that's correct, it goes in front of the board, we've done it, we've done it in the past, I just don't remember the, the steps that we went through to do it.
I think Mr. Robertson has something to say.
Yeah, I think, I think what we're getting at is, and I can use this as an example, down in industrial parks. More specifically, the Four Mile Ford Industrial Park. Those roads in there are public roads, they all are numbered roads. But they are, the land use part of it is that they're zoned industrial. So the ordinance itself is silent with respect to parking regulations in industrial. I think, Mr. Smith, I think what you're getting at, and I would have to defer to the county attorney for, for this, but what I'm understanding is, we simply lack jurisdiction currently. We lack the jurisdiction in those public roads and the fact that that property is owned industrial down there. I think it's solid on that, if you would jump in, if you, if I'm quoting that correctly- If you would jump in, if I'm quoting that correctly.
I actually can't tell you off the top of my head what the ordinance allows and what it doesn't with regard to enforcement. I do know that there are parking enforcement issues on roads within the county, and there's actually, I have a project on my desk, in fact, that's related to that. Not specifically related to this, but that is related to enforcement on, I believe, secondary and/or private roads.
The way I understand, the direction that I'm getting from my director is that we simply, based on his communications with whomever, and to include county attorney's office, is that because it is a state-maintained road, zoning simply lacks the authority to regulate parking in the public right-of-way. Now, the industrial zoning districts lack the language to give me the authority to enforce parking in an industrial zoning district. It's simply not there.
So your authority stops at the right-of-way?
That's correct.
Yeah.
And the industrial property, that, you know, back to, and if I may regress a little bit, with Jacob talking about this one particular section of R, again, that was, that was, we affectionately refer that to as the John Harris Law. That was created for overcrowding, and we found out that after everything, and it's some years later, after everything is done and said, this was virtually an unenforceable law for us. In essence, what it tried to make us was the HOA for all these subdivisions out here. I mean, if you park a vehicle, currently, the way, if you park a vehicle on your property out there, it might violate the subdivision ordinance. And when they put them out in the right-of-way, then it's out of my jurisdiction. So the law itself was basically unenforceable. I'd have to, we'd have to hire an army of people to enforce this law.
Chairman, I guess my question is, it says the county is without authority to pass an ordinance regulating parking on secondary roads unless further authorized authority is granted by the General Assembly. I ask my question to you, is that coming from our county attorney? Is the county attorney saying that?
Yes, it did. It was, I believe it's the information that you're referring to that you've received as well. It was a prior opinion that was issued to the zoning administrator.
What I can say to that is that the authority that the county has, Virginia is a Dillon state, right, a Dillon Rule state. So to the extent that the General Assembly has not allowed a locality to undertake ordinances to regulate whatever, in this case, in this case it might be parking, then the locality has no authority to do that. But again, that's a very general answer and not, I can't answer your question specifically without doing some research.
Moving, just to piggyback on Rick's comment about enforcement ultimately, in discussion with the zoning office, even considering the, all the residential lots of 20,000 square feet throughout the county or less, constant monitoring and enforcement of those residential lots is considered impractical with limited enforcement resources. I did want to clarify also to say that the removal of R regarding the percentage of front yards that can be parked does not remove protections against inoperable vehicles or untagged vehicles on lots that are located elsewhere in Section 12-20 and Section 12-21, elsewhere in the county code regarding motor vehicles and traffic. So if there's untagged, inoperable vehicles laying all about a lot, and there is a zoning complaint, there is potential enforcement there that we're still doing. The removal of this, the movement of this subsection will not impact that whatsoever. Moving on with off-street parking, we've also proposed to add minimum parking standards for a number of unique existing or newly added uses where no standard presently exists. This include industrial flex space, slaughterhouses, feed mill, bed and breakfasts. There was no standard prior, and they've been recently added uses to the code, or in the case of industrial flex, have always been there, they just never had a standard, so we've added those. We've also amended to reduce, alter, or increase minimum parking requirements as proposed. That would include furniture, appliance, and carpet store, personal service establishments, retail sales, shopping centers, all including reductions in the minimum parking requirements. We have a proposed increase of, from one space per four seats to one space per three seats in places of worship, consistent with recent changes in the mixed-use district. This is actually something that originally came out of Citizen and Public Involvement in the update to the mixed-use ordinance. It was suggested that some of the places of worship actually don't have adequate parking, so there was a slight increase on that. We revised, relocated, and removed parking spaces table notes as proposed, and in Section 23594 in the parking geometric standards, we've relocated geometric standards from the Design Standards Manual, Article 5. They're otherwise not changing, we're just relocating them to the zoning ordinance. Moving on to Division 10, off-street loading. In applicability, we've clarified and updated zoning references, again acknowledging mixed-use modifications that have been added. In general provisions, we've removed lighting requirements as misplaced and unnecessary, those are addressed elsewhere in the code. We've added life, health, and safety amendments to avoid conflict between loading spaces and traffic circulation. And in off-street loading, we've added industrial flex to industrial type 1, 2, and 3 requirements, and public schools with private schools. Public schools have not previously been addressed. In off-street loading, this gets us to another question that was raised during April 5th meeting. I've tried to address that also with the staff report that you have. Just in summary, from feedback from the fire office, specifically talking with Phil Sullivan, the state code and Spotsylvania County Design Standards Manual set up the framework for required fire lanes. I believe, just checking, Paul, did you just distribute the Article 5? I did want to, just as an add-on, I did print out a copy of, well, I'm sorry, Article 2 of the Design Standards Manual, specific to the pages regarding fire lanes. And on the sheet 210 under 2A1, you could see, under the current adopted edition of the Virginia statewide fire prevention code, the fire official is authorized to designate fire lanes on public streets and on private property where necessary. This is to prevent parking in front or adjacent to fire hydrants and provide access for firefighting equipment. And this goes on, I have a, number 2 also has some underlying sections that kind of get to exactly what the fire officials within the county are able to do in trying to get fire lanes established.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. Jacob, I was looking at number 2 here, and it says a fire lane shall be designated where as desirable, that certain roads areas, blah, 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 so forth. So it doesn't specifically say the entire frontage of variability?
No, it does not.
So that is a purview that we do, in other words, so that's the latitude that's giving the fire department when they do a review and they put that in, correct?
Yeah, as part of the technical review committee, the fire officials making the comment to try to accommodate their fire trucks in an emergency, and there is, there are reasons why that they did provide. I did provide that in the staff report, but I would like to go through those, why they do seek fire lanes as extensive as they do. First, in terms of building fronts, building fronts tend to have the main public access points and their favored locations for fire lane placements because it's quick access. The big doors, the big public access doors tend to be located there. That's where the fire trucks can most easily pull up, they don't have to drive around a building. Secondly, building or shopping center sides and rears often have minimal points of access, if any, and rear doors are typically reserved for private access or locked, and even if you're able to get through the private access, they're going through back warehouse space or hallways, and it's less easy to get in than going through the front door of a retail sales establishment, for instance.
I understand it. I, the issue, I've got it, no question, we need it, but the only thing I don't understand is, for example, I'm gonna give Morton's as a good example, because for a long time, everything was a fire lane. If you had to pick up something, you couldn't use anything, so, I mean, and it don't have to be in front of the door, but what I was thinking is, since they do have some latitude, why would they least have enough latitude to say, look, here's an offloading, or not necessarily a parking, but an offloading area, and put that where it wouldn't hamper fire apparatus, wouldn't have, wouldn't have to be in the front door, but someone could pull up and do it, because basically everybody's doing it anyway. That was just my thought, but...
I would suggest, in the interest of this specific amendment that we have this evening regarding loading, the issue tends to be related to the actual fire lanes, and I believe it would really be addressed with the fire rescue in relation to a potential amendment to the Design Standards Manual, Article 2, specific to fire lane placement.
I agree, I agree. You're right, that's the right venue to do it, I just wanted to voice my opinion.
Absolutely.
Continue on.
Yeah, so just going to some more of the rationale that was provided by fire and rescue, convenience of access for life, health, and safety outweighed the convenience of access for loading and loading ultimately, and customer pickups. County fire staff point to fire hose access as well as height limitations with ladders if need be. In Frem's experience, many private shopping centers prefer fire lanes across their frontages to prevent vehicles loading and stacking across their frontage. Some people staying a little bit longer than they should be, some of them turning into standing areas. I liken this to going to an airport terminal where you're dropping off or picking up. Oftentimes, there are staff members there trying to make sure that that flow goes because it turns into a traffic nightmare otherwise. Keeping in mind that many times, the front of these buildings are also primary travelways to get to the parking areas. Simply shifting loading areas away from the immediate building front avoids front door blockage and chaos, as well as customers coming from the parking areas into the store. And many private developments, in Frem's experience, don't want to devote resources to policing those front doors like an airport may. And the county lacks resources to monitor each and every site to assure loading areas along building fronts would flow properly. Last set of amendments have to do with off-street stacking, and this one's fairly quick and easy. Under general provisions, again, we've removed lighting requirements as misplaced and unnecessary. We've tried to avoid conflicts with loading spaces and stacking spaces in traffic circulation. In terms of minimum required space, we've amended car wash stacking requirements to apply to all principal car wash facilities. Right now, it's specific to automated car washes. We've added specific stacking requirements for fuel pumps in private public schools, and we've relocated all other uses standard to a table. For whatever reason, all other uses were not included, the off-street stacking table, they were just kind of floating at the end as an individual text item. So we've included that as part of the table for the code layout, really. And with that, staff does recommend that the planning commission approve the ordinance number 123171, off-street parking, stacking, and loading. And again, I do have Rick from the zoning office here this evening, if you have any additional questions that may require some more interpretation. Thank you.
Jacob, when we last saw this, we talked a little bit about what I call on-street stacking. Any further discussion on that or evaluation in regards to that?
I can tell you, from the technical review standpoint, when we've had applications, we are looking at, stacking typically is related to like ordering, you'd see it at gas stations, you may see it at drive-up, I can't think of a specific citation, but we do, we do try to make sure that there is no conflict, I mean, in terms of VDOT access from public road onto the site due to stacking of vehicles, yes.
Yeah, not that I object to what's in the revised ordinance, but I would ask staff moving forward, because I will be looking forward, is that on-street stacking issue that we have, and I'll point to Harrison Crossing with a Starbucks, because that can be a nightmare and a safety issue, and there are a few of those along that roadway where we have that issue. So I appreciate you commenting on that. Any other questions or comments for Jacob? I'm assuming there's no public comment either, so at this point, I will take a motion if there's no other questions.
I'll move.
Second.
Call the vote, please. Again, that is unanimous, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Are we through the public hearings, Wanda? We are. Kim and Jacob, thank you very much, good job, appreciate it. Any other new business this evening? Any other public comment? Hearing none, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I'll move.
I'll call the vote, please. That is unanimous, thank you very much, we'll see you in two weeks.